It's actually a really good time. It's uh, it's coming.
Five.
We change the data.
I do, yeah. And then. The port out. I touch. Where you go from.
Me too.
Okay.
We've got a wait service.
Yeah.
It's a couple of that.
What I have in scrubs.
Yep.
Like when a member of your line is. We've had that happen before. We've had to be. You never recall this.
No reno. At all.
They would have to know.
There was no reno. It was short.
There's some kind of.
That wasn't on.
No. Someone had reported.
Yeah, I saw some stuff.
The uh, the yellow. Just about there. You gotta try and pick two. I got those. Alright. All the. Oh, wow. Yeah. Did you guys ever make it on the ground?
No.
Later.
I might take you up on that. There you go. Almost. Why I play this.
It's been in some.
Seventy Friday, sixty-six Saturday, seventy Sunday. It's gonna be a beautiful weekend.
You must not really skip those.
Hmm. Well, it might be.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you're welcome.
More time to rag up.
You got it. I'll make you a pie.
You're welcome. No, no.
I like to. Demo shoot.
Saturday.
So I didn't get any squash. No squash.
Yeah.
Maybe, me. One little one is both this big. My pumpkins are huge though.
Yeah, Saturday's. Yeah, Saturday's.
I'm having a few days. I had a letter in the mailbox these Sunday night and hasn't been, and hasn't been picked up. We haven't had.
I gotta be ready at the end of the day.
You never know. Get them. Yeah. Get it when you get it. Actually, I have something there today. Probably get it. I think that probably. If they don't get it, the most.
So that's, that's pretty prosperous. My family. On this side.
Welcome everyone. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome. All of us are present. We have a call. Up first, we have approval of the minutes. September second, twenty twenty-five. Do we have any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections? I move to approve of the minutes for September second, twenty twenty-five.
On second.
All those in favor?
I was in town.
Four in favor or any abstaining? Up next, we have approval of the minutes for September eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion they are accepted as written.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Four, Bruce will.
I'm abstaining, I was not there.
Alright, old business. DOT Route seventeen project discussion with Commissioner Doughty.
So we have with us here tonight Commissioner Doughty and Ernie Martin. Obviously Dale is the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation. Ernie is the project engineer on the Route seventeen project. There has been quite a bit back and forth with, with you folks about trying to secure funding to do the sewer line replacements at the same time. So we've been going back and forth with DOT as well as other potential funding agencies and we keep coming up empty, so I asked the Commissioner to come to discuss the project with you folks.
Sure.
All set?
Yep.
Alright, so there's a couple of things. One thing, just philosophically, the department doesn't seek special federal funding. When we do that, we're talking about congressionally designated spending or grants unless we believe that we're aligned and can deliver those. We have a special agreement with our delegation who treats the state very well. You guys have some other grants, you know, they're, they're, they're very effective at bringing money home to Maine. Part of that is our agreement, it goes back several Commissioners before me. I've only been Commissioner for a month and a half, a month or so, but for a long, long time that, you know, we don't, we don't take federal money, we don't accept federal money, we don't ask for special federal money, not regular federal money, unless we think we can deliver it. So that's something, that's just a place where we are. We've always, we want to be able to use that money effectively and on time, anytime that happens. And there are hiccups and we're gonna probably, we're talking about, I'm sure you're gonna talk to me about a couple tonight. Where we are in that process, and I know Ernie's relayed most of this, but I'll, you know, probably be repetitive is we are in a place where our design is complete, we're ready to advertise. That federal, special federal money, four million out of the fifteen that we'd like to put into the segment road is special federal money. It's a congressionally designated spending. And that money, if we don't obligate it, which means we have to advertise and build soon after, by the end of the federal fiscal year, which ends in a couple of weeks, ends at the end of the month, that money lapses. And what happens to that money is that just goes back into the US, US general fund. That money is not available to Senator Collins, it's not available to us, it's not available to you. That money is gone from the state of Maine. So that four mi, four million, four out of the fifteen, a little over fifteen, that we're, we'd like to invest here, that we've been working on for a lot of years, doing a couple sets of designs, is in jeopardy. The rest of the eleven comes from a couple of things. There's federal money that's discretionary to the state, so we call it formula money. So the state gets a bunch of federal money by formula. That DOT has discretion of where to put that money. So a big portion of the rest of the eleven is in that discretionary money. That's not gonna lapse. We treat that like milk on a sho, shelf, we're cycle, recycling it all the time, okay? And we put it to the projects that are most ready to go and ready to be delivered and are the highest priority in the state, which this is one right now. And then there's a small amount of money that's the state match. Typically, when we do these projects, there is a local match. In this case, that local match has been waived. It's all state and federal on the highway side. So that fifteen million is four million in just, in CDS. And then the fifteen is, the rest of it's eighty-twenty, state and federal discretionary on our part. So we have this money, we're ready to go. If we stop the project, then that four million dollars goes away. If that four million dollars goes away, a couple of things happen. I think it will be difficult for all of us to convince Congress to bring that back. You know, I think our delegation, and I was talking to them, Carrie and I spoke to them, spoke to them again today, Senator Collins' staff. That will be, it'll be difficult for us to draw that money back. So that money may be lost and may be lost forever. The rest of the money, if we don't do the project, we're gonna take that and put that on the next project, right? There's other projects coming in the wa, in waiting, they're, the next one's behind this one that, that we would have to wait a little while to fund, probably might be next year, year after. But this eleven million would then go to one of those projects, so that would leave town too. So I think I'll give, I'll give you my three potential options, and you may have others, and I'd be happy to hear yours. The first one, Ernie's kinda laid out before and laid out with us the other day when we were in, was that we rebuild the highway. That we, that the water line gets, gets upgraded, and I think that's not in dispute at this moment. But the sewer line, we do, what we do in many locations, sewer line would stay as it is today, but there would be a, there'd be an agreement where you make repairs. The utility accommodation policy requires that if the, the sewer line has to go up or down or over, or it gets damaged when we're putting an underdrain, that the sewer district has to repair that. We've estimated that, I think at a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, knowing this clay tile, you know, I talked about that a little bit. I used to be the Public Works Director at Lewiston, getting the clay tile and it could be something other than that, it could be twice that, right? So it's probably two to four hundred, I don't know what the number is, we won't know. What we would like to do, if you're willing to take that on, what we would do, we could do, it's up to you. We could use something called the State Infrastructure Bank, a, a fund we don't use very often. It was originally federal money that's gone out to towns, come back, and now it's recycled, so we can use it for something like providing your community a loan. So let's say those repairs end up being three hundred thousand, pick a number, right? We would loan you three hundred thousand, there's a couple of ways you could pay it back, it would be a low or no interest. We could use your local road assistance program if you want to, and we would just take that money and account for it. So if it were three or four hundred thousand, that's ten years, if it's two hundred thousand, that's five years. So that's, that's one way to get that done. The next option, which is one I think is fairly palatable to everyone, or all of you, and I understand why, is the upgrade, the sewer upgrade, which is coming up on three, four million dollars, right? But that's a, that's a huge thing, I get that. Again, if you wanted to do that, we can use the SIB loan, you, that would be more than just your local road assistance 'cause, you know, it's now that, now we're talking three or four million, doing over ten years or fifteen years, that's gonna be something more than thirty, forty thousand a year. So those are those two options. The last option, that you decide none of those work for you. And the department would go back and do a couple of things. One, we would decide whether we're just gonna be, build the road anyway. And when we damage things, we'll put them back the best we can, but we're not gonna fix them. And we just rebuild the road because the road's available to everyone in the state, and it's a road we should be rebuilding. We won't lose the four million, we won't upset our delegation, so that, that's one option. The other one is, under that third option would be, we just cancel the project. And as we talked about earlier, we'd take the money, we'd lose the federal, that federal, special federally, the four million. And the eleven million, we would direct somewhere else. And that project would stay idle for some time, probably quite some time. So I think those are kind of the options in front of you, we're happy to talk about any of them in more detail. But we do need to make a decision, and we need to make a decision fairly quickly, 'cause October first is coming right around the corner. And that deadline is hard. We can't petition the federal government to extend that, we can't petition, there is none, that's just a hard deadline. Senator Collins can't petition, it just is a hard deadline, the money goes away. So that's why we're here tonight, that's why it's important we have this conversation today and kind of pick a path forward together.
I, I would like to know why? Why this project? Why here? What? Why? Why is it important to have this done? I traveled this road, the Route seventeen to Augusta is a good road. I have a business on Main Street. Most of the businesses and the revenue takers are on Main Street and Depot Street. This project is going to stab us in the back for a considerable amount of time and hurt our bottom lines. That's why I wanna know why this project, why here? And what benefit do we get out of it?
I, I think, this is my view, and I've been sitting, I've sat in your seat many times, right? And I've sat on this side many times, and Ernie can describe some others, where we've gone in and done these things in the village, where. I wasn't here, I was, when, when this project was conceived in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, so I'm not sure what the conversation was between the department and the town. I gotta believe there was one, 'cause that's usually how these come from. I just wasn't, I'd left the department for about two years and came back, so I, that's the window I was gone. So I can't ask, answer how it was generated, but I think the why gets to, first, this road has never been built to modern standards. It doesn't meet ADA compliance. I don't think that, I think the benefits that the town gets from it, a long term, your business and the like, and yes, there is an impact, absolutely, during construction. Post-construction, you have something that looks like a modern downtown that attracts people to invest in and build. And if you were to look at places like Belgrade, Hollowell, if you look at Searsport, which is a little bit like this, we just went down there, we just finished a project there, and they're already seeing businesses interested in coming in because it, it meets, it, it, it's easy to access, it looks good, it, pedestrians can traverse it well and safely. There are some pedestrian issues along here, I know years ago, they used to be out at the Mel, a number of them. So I think it's all those things, it's really bringing, investing in your downtown and investing in attracting businesses into your downtown, and people can live, work, and play. That's just my view of the world, everybody has a different one, right?
I, I, I'm concerned about, I understand that part of the project is going to include a turning lane on Main Street. And I'm wondering, is that really necessary? I mean, people have to wait maybe two minutes before they can, the car turns into the Medical Arts Building or onto Water Street, and the car behind has to wait maybe a minute or two? Is a turning lane gonna, because I know by doing the turning lane, we're losing parking. And, and I don't know if we're losing part of the sidewalk, but I know we're losing the parking. The parking is right in front of my business, and most of my customers park there, and we're gonna be losing that. It's like, you know, this is, this is a detriment to me.
You're talking right out here around the corner.
No, I'm talking right up here, in front of the bank building.
Right, where, where we push the road over to get the trucks to turn, so they don't have to stop and wait for other trucks to come through. It's more of a sightline alignment issue is why we're doing that. It's, it's more of that accident history that's out here, intersection improvements, like up here at Church, that's a disaster. We're gonna clean that up, 'cause the, the old jewelry building's been hit three or four times. And also, we listen to our region, you know, our region speaks volumes as to what the issues are out here, there's a lot of drainage issues, the road structure is, is failing in a lot of areas. We all know the utilities have failed over the course of time out there too. There's a lot of drainage faults with this corridor, but like, like Dale mentioned, there's been a couple of accident histories with pedestrians out on Main Street over here. That's how it's gonna get improved, the sightlines are gonna be better with the crossings. The parking is gonna be placed offset wise to restrict obstacles in the way of drivers seeing the pads, vice versa, pads seeing the cars. Very aware of the parking being lost, we were able to add a little parking here and there on the project, obviously not right here, you know, but up on Church, we're adding a few spots, and then, you know, everybody's away, we're removing the body shop for drainage purposes by the railroad, improving that. So I think from that standpoint, the parking's gonna be improved down there, and you guys also have like parades right out here. So that's gonna improve the town aspect when you get ready to do that, the road's gonna be much safer. I think that's the biggest reason why the department pushed for this project, the safety aspect, more than anything.
So safety, I mean, that's a, I mean, safety's a good reason.
It is.
I, I'm, I was just concerned that people thought, maybe our downtown looked a little shabby and it was time to dress it up. We're okay with how it looks as it is. The intersection between Depot and, I guess Pleasant Street, where, where Butler is, that area is lethal. How are you going to address that?
You know, alignments are gonna get fixed there, and there is gonna be a turn in pocket there to turn left right by where Butler. So that'll help cars get over there, and then cars are gonna be able to slip by. Just the overall road development there is gonna, the alignment's getting better vertically. Right now, there's a couple of crestings in there that really aren't working very well with, with speeds. Speed's an issue. We all know people drive slow out here, it's a short seg, segment, but people drive fast. You know, based off the history of these type of projects, like Dale mentioned, there's a huge improvement just from, yeah, the aesthetics are gonna look much better. You're gonna get a brand new sidewalk, brand new, everything to the storefronts, it's gonna look great. But I think the whole traffic calming of when some of that curb line comes in, it's gonna be a huge improvement as far as that mobility. I get it, people in a hurry, why? They're, they're in a hurry all over the state, right? You know, people don't have any patience, I hear that every time, it's like, I can't get from point A to point B in thirty seconds, what's up? You know, so it, it's all time-based, but I think, you know, based off the history of these type of projects, I think you guys are gonna love this project when it's done, because I think it's gonna be a, a shot in the arm from an economic standpoint, from a, people commuting through the area or just visiting, I think it's just gonna be a huge improvement.
Ernie, around where Butler, just years ago when I looked at it, but there was a number of rear ends there, that that, that left turn will, will mitigate some of those.
Correct.
Well, part of it too is that anybody like me who lives up on Lewis Hill Road, you have to come to a stop, yield. A lot of people don't know they have to yield. Whenever I have company coming and I know they've never been there before, I make sure they know they've got to yield there or they're gonna become a hood ornament on an eighteen wheeler. Are there, on the crosswalks, are there gonna be the little signs and the blinking lights that let people know? Because there is none here. And I mean, I watch people going from the Medical Arts Building to get lunch and whatever, and some people stop, some don't. It's, I, I watch it, my windows, look at that, I see it.
I think you've got rapid reflecting beacons.
RFBs, yeah.
Yeah, on most of them. And that's part of the, well, we call it, it's a silly term, but it's verticality, so, you know, crosswalks are flat. And in Maine, they wear off, so there's really not much to, to mark them, but with those RFBs, that's what we call them, those flashing beacons, and with just a vertical signage, that, that, it's amazing how much that helps people understand there's a crosswalk there. Because Maine's paint doesn't last long, and people don't look down, they tend to be looking for those vertical things, so those should both be signs, the new curb cuts will also cue people, 'cause they'll look up and there'll be a curb cut, you know, with truncated domes, the things that people can detect. Those all things just give people a cue that there's a crosswalk there, it's not just a paint in the road, so.
So the why is that the road does not meet ADA standards? It hasn't been built accord, up to standard or up to code.
And safety.
And safety.
Safety for both drivers and.
And the benefit will be that it will improve traffic flow, it will make the downtown look pretty. I mean, I mean, the only other issue I had was that, you know, if you pair up the sewer lines, whatever, and we have to replace them, you know, this is not, this is no longer a town that depends heavily on people working in the paper mills. This used to be an affluent paper town, it isn't that anymore. And I'm flattered that the DOT thinks that we have that kind of money lying around, but you know, when we're told it could, it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, to fix what you break, it's kinda hard to take, especially when you find out that it could go anywhere up to, maybe even five hundred thousand. I did not know about the other options of the loans and whatnot. That's something that I'm gonna have to take into consideration, because we don't have that money.
I understand. We have these meetings a lot with towns and.
And not to be unkind, but we're, we're just now getting our new sewer bills.
Yeah.
And we're about to get our new tax bills.
Yeah.
And.
They described those to us earlier.
And to have a hundred and eighty-nine upward to half a million thrown on top of that is a very bitter pill for this town to swallow.
And I think that's why we're offering the SIB loan here, 'cause that, that'll leave, I know it's still a bitter pill, but it's a bitter pill spread out over time. Ernie and I live in the same town, our tax bills just came, and I can relate. We would do it, we were storing a lot of CMP stuff in our town for the NEC corridor, those, those all went away, so our taxes weren't. But I, I know we would struggle with a three or four million dollar bill upfront. We would, we, we probably could do something with a half a million dollars over ten years, but that's just our town, and our town's a small town like this, actually smaller than this one, but I know how, I know that, how that would go in my town, except for some of this conversation. What I would have hoped, and this just didn't happen for whatever reason, is this conversation should have been occurring through the entire process of the project, that's how it usually goes. And I don't know how this, what's happened with the SUC board, I don't know what's happened with us, but this shouldn't, we shouldn't be at eleven-thirty at night having this conversation. We should have been having it at six o'clock at night, you know, and so we had a year or so to work it out. We're just now in this pickle, we're all in this pickle, we need to figure out what we're gonna do. And I, you know, we have some gifts that have been given to us by Congress, I just think, I would hope that that would be something that the community would want to utilize.
Yeah, I think, just to, just to add, I mean, we've been working closely with Mark, you know, trying to retrofit things around this, you know, our, our underdrain's a problem, obviously all the new underdrains going in, you know, it's kinda created some obstacles around Mark's facilities. So we've got a bunch of test pits in the contract, what that means is contractors are gonna have to go dig a test pit to find out where Mark's stuff is, you know, so at least they, just not, they're not out there excavating and just arbitrarily anywhere and blowing stuff up, right? So I think we've, we've done our due diligence, it's not perfect, and Mark's doing some, some cameraing, right? Starting services and stuff, which are gonna help our contractor understand where those laterals are, which they go from his existing main to the homes. 'Cause there is some impact there to the homeowner possibly if that happens, so it's like any project, been around a long time. I, I, I think we've, we've got a good plan, yeah, I know it's expensive to the town, but I think it's the best we can do at this point in time to, to navigate what's in front of us. You know, you mentioned, you know, the mill and stuff, I, I remember when I first started here, twenty-four years ago, that's scary. But Wascasa was going through the same thing, right? Main Yankee shut down and all of a sudden that cash cow's now gone. And we kinda, we rebuilt downtown Wascasa, right? So there was, there was a lot of animosity amongst the community, a bunch of SUC board, why do we spend this kind of money? And Wascasa has thrived since, you know, I, I see there's a lot of benefits by having that new and improved infrastructure, making it safer, people can adapt to that. So I think the opportunity is in front of all of us to do this project, even, we see the importance of it. That's why the Commissioner's here today talking about it, because it is very important to us, because it is a, a major throughput, right? Throughput.
What is the timeline of the project?
Uh, we are going to advertise October eighth, so probably not a lot is gonna get done this year.
October, advertise?
October eighth.
When you say advertise?
Ad, advertise means ask, contract just a bid, right? Yes, advertising the bid.
Gotta get over DOT language.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're gonna put it out for bid, contractor bids, October eighth, so it's a three-week advertise. Then it's a thirty-day window for us to award it to that low-bid contractor. We are low-bid, we just can't arbitrarily, we want that contractor, so we are a low-bid entity. I don't anticipate anything getting done this year, 'cause the last thing we wanna be out there is having a contractor deal with frost, especially with the aging utilities on the road, so bulk of it's gonna happen in the start, in the spring of twenty-six. We'll navigate, you know, getting the media releases out, letting everybody know. Right now, the plan is, is to do alternating one-way traffic in work zones, you know, up to twenty-five-hundred feet, you know, so that, we're not directing people down Pleasant and doing that around. The locals are gonna do that on their own, but we're not planning any detours. So the major throughput traffic should maintain right on Route seventeen itself. It's gonna be two years, it'll be twenty-six and, and complete twenty, end of twenty-seven.
You're doing it in sections?
Not sure, we don't really have a plan for the contract, to dictate to the contract where to start, where to finish. That's really gonna be on them, them to determine. If you're asking me, it probably depends on that time of year, but this is pretty much a commuter route, you know, you don't see.
They have limitations on how much they can open at any one time, so they would be in segments, it's just one of those segments, how those would go.
Yeah. I think we got a good plan, I, like I said, it's a great project.
The Stretcher Body Shop is gonna be torn down for drainage.
Yep.
And this town does not have a lot of parking spaces. Is there any way that once that's torn down, there could be a few parking spaces within there? And the biggest thing is that apartment house right across the road from Stretcher, they've got maybe four places to pack, sixteen or so apartments. It would greatly improve things for them and make it safer.
I think one of the things, and Commissioner can talk more on this than I, a lot of times we have, we buy property as part of the project, and then when the project's done, you know, the town could petition the DOT to maybe look at, you know, hey, would you mind letting us have that property to develop for parking? But that's something we won't look at right now, because there's too many unknowns at this point in time.
But it is.
Possible.
Possible.
Yeah, it's a conversation we certainly can have. There's some federal rules around it, but in fits of transportation uses, we, we'd have to get our right-of-way people involved, but we definitely can do that. We're doing that, and we're doing that a lot of places where, once we're done, and we've used what we have, we, we need, are there, is there surplus property that we can do something with?
Yep. 'Cause you have that connection with the water district right there too, that possibly might navigate some, some connectivity. Well, Mark, did, you wanna, one second here, what, do you have, Mark?
No, I just wanna kind of go over the project from the town's standpoint. If everything they're saying is true, this project does need to be done to replace the infrastructure of all of the street, there's no doubt about that, including the sewer lines. As we've discussed, the problem is, we don't have the money. As we've discussed, the problem is, we don't have the money to do the sewer lines. The other problem is, the sewer lines that are there that they are planning to leave in place will not survive the compaction and the construction around them. The videos that we've seen from two thousand and eighteen are showing clay pipe, sections of the clay pipe missing. What's there is all cracked. As soon as you start running vibratory rollers that weigh twelve ton, over the top of these, they're gonna collapse. We're going to end up with probably north of five hundred thousand dollars just repairing, putting Band-Aids on sections as they collapse, which will be more expensive, usually that's done as a change order through the contractor, and change orders are usually at a rate of about two-point-five, what it would be if you did it going in upfront. There are some sections that are SDR thirty-five pipe, they will survive, some of those sections have to be moved, though, there's about a hundred and sixty feet in one area that we have to move the sewer line. That's included the one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar estimate that they have. What that estimate doesn't include is inspection services, we'll have to have an inspector available for them onsite as they're doing all this project. We'll have to have engineering done, construction administration. We've already got sixty thousand dollars in plans, originally we were hoping to be part of this project. When it started, it was gonna be about two-point-four million dollars we were looking at, now it's up to about three-point-four million with contingencies. The town really does need MDOT to do this project. If they don't, if we go with the option of no project, that becomes a black mark on the town, not MDOT, for the loss of the CBS money. It will affect our ability to secure CBS money, CPF money, any federal money in the future, because this money was coming to our town, we're saying, no, don't do it, they're going out of town at our request. So, we are really behind a bigger eight ball than we realize at this point. We need to do it, we can afford to do it. I don't, I'm glad I'm not in any of those five seats up there, because it's your decision. But the right way to do this is to get three-point-four million dollars and be part of the project. Those plans are already drawn up, they can make the changes to the bid and make that part of the project again in a short amount of time.
You said it's gonna be exposed, and some stuff most likely will break, and you're gonna Band-Aid it?
The stuff that isn't exposed is what I'm worried about, Ernie. When they go through and they leave our clay line alone in there, ten feet from it, fifteen feet from it, and they start running over that with a vibratory roller, the clay pipe is gonna crumble and collapse.
'Cause I was just wondering, if it's exposed and open to repair?
If it's exposed.
Why not fix it, instead of Band-Aid it?
Exactly, but we don't know exactly where those sections are gonna be, that, that's kind of hard to throw a number at. It's, when you go to bid, and correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have a set of plans to give to the contractors, so they know what they're bidding on. If we don't know exactly where they're gonna be hitting these lines, especially the sewer service lines, then it's a crapshoot, and they're gonna put a high number at that, and we pay for the sewer portion of the work, if it's like it was when we did the other north end of town.
One of the gentlemen said that you're gonna do a project hole to see what's down there, see what needs to be done?
A test pit.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Actually, I'm in the process now, like Ernie had mentioned, starting Monday, Vortex will be in town, they're going, they're starting at one end of town to the other. We're gonna locate where every force, every sewer main is in town, where every manhole is, we'll have GIS locations on it, GPS coordinates to give to MDOT. We'll also know where every service line comes into the main with a GPS point, how deep it is, and then we're going up the service line from the main and locate where that is at the shoulder of the road or at the property line. So, we'll have real good locations, hopefully by the end of that project, to give them, so that they, it won't be part of the bid, it'll be too late for that, but at least it will give the contractor, the successful bidder, an idea of where all of our stuff is. So, then we get into, is, is that covered under the main dig-safe law, or is that covered under MDOT's utility accommodation policy? That's where we get into a, we'll say, a discussion, and how we're going to handle that. If we know where all of our infrastructure is, we tell them, they can't dig it up, but it isn't the digging up that I'm worried about.
Have the equipment nearby.
It's the equipment nearby, even the excavator, you know, the excavator comes through, pulls a big rock out, trust me, there's some huge rock ledge boulders and everything under this roadway. When they pull it out, they're not gonna know that the corner of that rock went through the sewer line, but once that, that happens, then we have to go in and fix it, and we're gonna have, I'm gonna make a low guess and say a hundred different places we're gonna have to fix. And we could probably just have Adam Kusongui write it out back and call for the next two years. That is not gonna be cheap. In the long run, we're better off to bite the bullet, spend the three-point-four million dollars that we can have and we can afford. Eric and I have looked at a bunch of different funding options, we've talked to Maine Municipal Bond Bank, the SRF program, block grants.
Block grants, the Northern Border Regional Commission, Representative Golden's office, and there, again, none of our federal delegates know if there even is going to be funding available for any of these things. There wasn't last year, so, or the earmarks, if you will, so, they're not super confident that there are going to be earmarks moving forward, so, yeah, so we're really, I sat on Thursday for a couple hours with Catherine from AVCOG, and we were trying to figure out how we could cobble together enough funding, you know, for us to be partners in this project, and there's just, there's just no way. You know, there's so many limitations on the grant funds that are available out there, and like the CDBG funds, you know, you have to submit a letter of intent in the spring, so we missed that, and it's still a multi-year process to get approval for that funding, so, which puts us behind, and, you know, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five match, we still have to come up with twenty-five percent of those funds. The Northern Border Funds, again, that's a fifty-fifty match, we would still have to cover, excuse me, come up with half of those funds, that we just, we don't have, and we can't, you know, we can't ask the ratepayers to take on any more debt, so.
A lot of these lines, sewer line, storm drain line, was put in, in the forties and fifties, pipe has a fifty-year lifespan. Some of it's over seventy-five years old. It's foolish to have them come through and do their project and not replace the sewer line. It's going to fail, I can guarantee you that, and I can guarantee it's gonna be expensive if we're not out of this project. It's gonna be even more expensive if we are out of it, but at least then we have pipe that's in the ground that's good for another fifty years, and we'll probably try and get another seventy or eighty out of that, just like we have what's in the ground. But if you don't, we're gonna spend probably closer to a million dollars putting Band-Aids on that, and then once their moratorium is up, five-year moratorium, we're gonna go back, dig that road up, replace the sewer line.
Again?
No, because we're just, we're just putting Band-Aids on it, Bruce. It's, it's going to need replacing in the next ten to fifteen years, irregardless, whether they come through or not. It's not that we don't need to do it, it's that we can't afford to do it.
Just one second. Aaron, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I, yeah, I did, I think my question was answered in the fact that if we did have to take out a loan, if it would be the sole responsibility of just the ratepayers that would have the burden of paying it back, because it seems to me, if it's something that benefits the whole town, I mean, there's a lot of people that are not on, on the sewer in this town, and if it benefits the whole town, and it's just the ratepayers paying for it, it seems grossly unfair, and our sewer bills are already very high as it is, and so, that's just all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Mark, I just, you, you walked up to some things, and I wanna make sure I understood, and I've been sitting, yes, eating Lewiston, you know, clay tile pipe's terrible, once you touch it, once you break it, you just, it's hard to get to the end of it, right? It, it seems to me that one thing is, let's say that everything went away, there was never a project, sooner or later, you're gonna have to deal with a stretch, right?
We have seen issues, we're, there are areas we've gotta repair, we're either gonna do point repairs, slip line, cure and replace pipe, we're gonna have to do something.
And I gotta believe, although it's more expensive than lots of things, when we're in there, and we've taken the road surface off, we're down the ways, and your contractor's working with our car, it's the same contractor, there is ultimately some savings compared to having to go replace it later by yourself, put the road back, all that, so, we, we never really talked about that option, is we walk away, you come in later, do the sewer line, maybe that's ten years, maybe, whatever that is, right? And then we come back, that's, it's cheaper to do it together than it is two of us doing it separately, I would say.
The other thing is, under their five-year moratorium, we're gonna have areas that we missed, that got broken during construction, failed after they're paved. When they paved, they put eight inches of pavement down on this road surface. We would have to, and the way their moratorium reads is, if we dig that up, we have to do fifty feet either side of that trench that we dug, shoulder to shoulder, so one side of the road to the other, hundred feet in distance, we have to repave, and they have an inspector there from the state making sure we do that. We're gonna have, for every place that we do something like that, we're gonna have fifty thousand dollars in pavement to dig up and make a point repair five feet deep, six feet deep on a sewer line. It's, if we're not part of it, it's gonna cost us, and we're not gonna have any more money for it. I'm just telling you what the options are, and what we can be facing in the future, if we aren't part of this project.
Can you explain to me the state infrastructure bank? We talked of, that was one of the things you mentioned when we first started talking, what does that look like?
So, what we have, what we have, and we've had it for years, we don't use, just has used it, a couple of communities have used it, we have a fund for things like this, like we're coming into town to do something, town doesn't have the cash today, or they wanna add on something that they don't have the cash today, whether it's something like this, or the community wants to add something, right, additional sidewalk or something beyond what we would normally do. So, we have this fund, originally it was a federal fund, it was a federal program many years ago, we've loaned that money out, got it back, so we have a pool of funding that's flexible, that we can loan out through what we call the State Infrastructure Bank, and then the town repays it. There's a couple of different ways to repay it. One, you can write us an annual check, and we repay it over some, whatever we've agreed to, we just do a loan agreement with you, it's kinda simple, right? Or the other one is, you get paid local road assistance, every town does, it's different, I think you told me yours, and I didn't look, I meant to look for a came, it was forty-ish.
Yeah, it's forty-two this year.
Forty-two-ish. So, if we do the option where it's a couple hundred thousand, you know, we loan you the money to make these repairs, or four hundred thousand, whatever it is that Mark incurs, we'd loan you that money, and then over time, we, we just pay it back, you could either pay it back through your, through your local road assistance, or you could write us a check, but it's a, it's, it's kind of a bonding thing, but it's just from, it's just between us, right? It's not, there's no bank involved, it's just us.
What type of payments, I mean, how much can that actually go up to? You know, as far as, 'cause you.
I think it really depends on what you borrow, right? So, if you did the whole thing, you're borrowing four-ish million now?
Three-point-four.
Three-point-four, but if we went with an SRF, well, there's a chance we get some principal forgiveness, maybe as much as a billion dollars. So, even if you figured we're borrowing two-point-four million over twenty years, that's an increase over our six-hundred-and-seventy-one users of about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year in this sewer bill. Some are gonna be more, the people that use more water are gonna pay more, they're gonna pay maybe as much as fifteen-hundred, two-thousand more a year, you know, the high-end users, and the low-end users that are just paying the minimum will continue to pay the minimum. But on average, you know, we've gotta pay back about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per six-hundred-and-seventy-one sewer users to cover two-point-four million dollars over twenty years.
Billy?
I just wanna clear, the local road assistance fund, we've always spent that on our local roads, so that would be like forty-two thousand dollars coming out of paving town roads, just to kind of make sure everybody knows where that LRAP funds go down.
Okay, thank you, Billy.
I got a question. Mark, you know, sometimes I can be a pain in the ass?
No.
Yeah, there it comes. If it's dug up and exposed, and it costs us three million now, and it's fixed right, down the road, if we've gotta dig it up, replace pavement and everything else, it's the old dimes now or dollars later?
Yes, it is.
It may be a lot of dimes and three million, but if we have to dig it up, fix something that was broke we didn't know about, and repave to the, to the standards we have to meet, what's asphalt gonna be in four years before the five-year moratorium's up?
Thought it goes down every year, doesn't it, Bill?
That's why I'm saying dimes now instead of dollars. You know, if, if there's a fund, that I think I understand that we can borrow from.
Yeah, but not the, not.
And do it right?
Correct.
I think we could do up to that amount if we want to, it's just gonna be a different payment structure, 'cause it's not forty thousand a year, it's gonna be more, we have to figure out what the term is and discuss that, so we could, I looked this morning, I think there's adequate funds to do what we need to do, if we need to do something here, if, if that's the, valuable to the town.
I think, I think most people know I'm not for spending money, but spending it now and saving down the road makes sense to a moron like me. So, if there's a way we can do it, get it done right the first time, why do a job twice? Especially if it's gonna add more expense later.
I think you're exactly right.
Once in a while, I hit the bull's.
The other thing is, to her point of, instead of just putting it all onto the sewer users, if we send MDOT packing, it isn't the sewer department that is going to harm, it's gonna be the entire town. Therefore, the town does benefit by doing this project, and perhaps the thought should be investigated a little further as to whether or not this debt is repaid by the town, or just the sewer users, or some formulation of the two.
Combination, yeah.
A combination of the two. You know, it's, it's not just gonna be the sewer department can't go and get federal money, the town is gonna have a black mark. The town is, even though the money is coming out of the sewer users for the sewer treatment plant that we're doing now, if we default on that loan, it's the town of Little More Falls loan, so they are gonna pay the price. It's the same way with this here, if we send them packing, say, we don't want you in our town, they ain't coming back, and that infrastructure is in bad shape, I mean, Bill, you, you know, if we're gonna benefit as well in the sewer department, there's catch basins that are going into the sewer line now that wash out the sewer treatment plant, when we got that three-inch downpour last week, you know, that is, those catch basins are gonna be removed from the sewer line. That will help the town save money, because all of that water is going to the sewer treatment plant and being measured, so that enters into the formula that we have with Jay in Little More Falls. So, there will be long-term savings, even though they're minute here and there, it's going to add up over time, but like you said, you can either spend a dime now or a dollar later, and that's a good, this is.
I may not be here later, so I'm willing to spend a dime now if it's gonna save us money long-term.
I'm glad that you brought up Mr. Nichols. I, I would like to get Mr. Nichols' feelings on this, because he's the head of Public Works, and even though it's Maine Department of Transportation who's doing it, a lot of, a lot of the stuff is going to be accommodated by the Public Works Department, I'd like to hear his feelings and thoughts, too.
There's two storm drain lines, one, on one side of the highway, grass by the old Boll Brothers, and the other one by Bailey's, that has been in horrible shape for probably twelve to fifteen years. That heavy rainstorm we had a couple Saturdays ago, Bailey Brothers Packing Lot flooding, I mean, that drain line, you couldn't get a camera through it ten years ago. So, I mean, the, the drain is in this town on Main Street, now Depot Street is in horrible condition, so, I mean, something's gonna have to be done there soon. I mean, it just has been, getting put off for years and years and years, and I mean, it's, it's out of time.
Same, we did have a huge sinkhole open up over here on the sidewalk, too.
Yep.
Because of that storm.
Down here by this, right by the corner of the building. I had to video that line probably six, seven years ago, and I mean, the storm drain line that goes from here all the way down to verbal by the police station is all rotted out, you can see where it's all caving in.
There's a sinkhole at the end of Pleasant Street on Route Seventeen, there's a sinkhole up here across from Fosse Jewelry, on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Someone at the end of.
There, there's a sink, it needs to be done. The storm drain line is junked, the sewer. The storm drain line is junked, the sewer lines are a disaster. And the water company, they're ready to do this because they've got old pipe in as well. I can't comment on this because I don't know. But it does need to be done.
Yeah, I mean, related to the, like, the cost of, like, the end of drain, a lot of times it's parallel on the sewer main for a good portion of this project. So it's kind of going to be in the same trench, too. So, you know, you can't predict what the contractor is going to bid. But they can kind of do things hand in hand if the sewer was to get replaced at the same time as reconstructing the drainage. Because in a lot of cases, like Mark mentioned, where we're replacing X amount of feet around catch basins of the sewer main. But if it was all going in new, which we've had the design.
We have that design.
And then we, then we flip back to, you know, retrofitting everything, which is, obviously, no one likes that. I think that's why we're, we're commissioners here today to talk about that. And if there are options, you know, could something be worked out with design? Well, we've got the design, it's just a matter of trying to flip the design package back into, to include it. So it just really comes down to that decision as to which way I think everybody wants to go.
What I like about that, putting it back in, is it's going to create a lot of work for Ernie, that's a good thing.
It's something to do, I think it's something to do with our name, you know, he's-
He's, he's against it, don't, don't take it personally. We pull each other's chain regularly and he's bigger than I am, so he pulls a little bit out.
He gives it to me here as well as on the basketball court, so I get it many ways from him.
Mark, I do it at office, too, so he gets it in both directions.
Now, October 1st, is that when you said the deadline is?
The deadline for us to obligate the funds, so we have to commit to advertising and moving forward with a project before October 1st. We may have actually already, because federal high, you know, federal government, right? Because when it gets, when it gets to the end of the fiscal year, they actually shut down everything for a couple of weeks before, a couple of weeks after. So we may have already obligated the funds, we can de-obligate them, but once we've obligated and we need to move towards advertisement relatively quickly, I think there's time, where Ernie and Mark were talking about, if we were to switch designs or modify the designs or go back to the previous stuff. It's one of the few places where we have a design kind of with and without, right? We have both, we did both because we did it twice.
Yeah, the other one was at 90%.
Yeah, so we can swap them fairly quickly. We can swap them in the timeframe for Ernie to advertise probably later this year or early next. And that would probably be okay with federal highway, so. But we'll obligate the funds, we'll secure that four million plus the rest of the federal fund to nail it to the floor, kind of thing.
As far as the process for us, if they're willing to loan us the money, we can take that as like an interim loan until we get approved in the next round of SRF money.
I hadn't thought of that, yeah.
Which will give us our-
Forgiveness.
Ability for principal forgiveness of maybe a million, maybe more, but at least something so we're not paying back all 3.4 million. We can, we can have that secured, but then maybe have a better deal down the road.
That would make your application look better, too.
Yes.
It does?
Well, it's going to be a good SRF application because it's a joint project with the water district, with MDOT. We should rank high, especially with that financial situation.
It's kind of like our roadway, it's kind of like your last segment of, yes, unbuilt, so it's beat, you know.
As you said, really, the economic situation in your community matters, too. That, that also adds to the quality of the application.
I just don't like the idea of having something open and, forgive me, sir, putting a Band-Aid on it. If it's open, fix it. Because that'll save money down the road.
Well, I think the other problem is, we will damage things, as Mark said. But when we're done and we've got all that damage fixed, the rest of that line is still in a place. Having been Public Works in Lewiston and seeing that stuff failing every winter all the time, even the parts we don't damage are going to continue to fail periodically. You're going to get sinkholes, you're going to get collapses and sewer backups. So if, if you don't fix it, that's going to be perpetual, it's going to continue until you Band-Aid everything together, this Band-Aid to Band-Aid, right?
And where we'd be part of this project before the roadway would get paved, we would have the opportunity to inspect that line and make sure that it's good before the pavement goes down. We'd run the cameras down through all these lines, up all the services, make sure everything under the roadway is in good shape before the hot top goes down. Once that hot top goes down, the moratorium's on and we're on the hook. So that's just coordination without inspection, so.
We have a little bit of time to explore what we just talked about, about this loan and what, what you were just talking about, about maybe be able to take a loan and how that would apply in a year for next.
What we basically need to do is get the assurances from the commissioner that we can go for the 3.4 million through them. We've already contacted the SRF program and we can do an application with them. We'll probably get the loan, I don't know what the interest rate is versus what it is with the MDOT.
We can, we can make that very, very, very small.
So we may, we may end up doing something like that or a combination of the two, whatever keeps that payment the lowest. But a real consideration should be made as to whether or not this is put onto the sewer users only or the town. Because it's, the town's road and if we don't become part of this, that road ain't getting done.
If, you asked about, I'm sorry, you asked about time, yes. And I think what, what we'll do, that Mark just said, is we'll go back, I'll go back, I'll sit down with our finance person and talk about, because we haven't really talked about, I mentioned it, that we might, you might end up there. I thought you were going to go more with the Band-Aids. So I'll go back, try to figure out what those terms are, I'll get those to Kerry in the next few days, probably by Monday or Tuesday next week. So you'll have that and try to figure out how that meshes in with the SRF loan and how you want to look at it, so.
You know, if the SRF loan is giving us $1 million in principal forgiveness, but they're charging us 6% interest and the state is going to say, or MDOT is saying, we'll give it to you at 4% interest, we can still calculate what our best payment would be going forward. And who we stay with, who we go with, but we'd at least have them secured.
Or no interest.
Oh, no interest, or very low, very, very low. I was thinking less of what you were thinking, so yes, I just got to go back and look at what we've done historically for fairness. But it's been low, I mean, for something like this where it's in our mutual interest, that's different, right? If you were borrowing against the CIB to go put a pocket park in or something like that, that's different. But this, for all the reasons you've listed today, this is of all of our interest to get this done right, get it done right, so I'll definitely-
I support that, right.
What's that?
He's putting words in my mouth.
Long as Ernie did, not me.
That, that, Ernie?
Yeah.
Would that be a town meeting discussion? If we're going to talk about asking the town what they think about sharing the burden? Is that something we should do, would, would have to do for an open town meeting or?
That's, I mean, that's up to you guys. Obviously, anytime we've won money, we have to just like a body approval. So whether you do it in an open town meeting or a secret ballot, I guess that's your discretion.
Right, I'm, I'm more like the thought is like getting people's opinions on the sharing the burden and the value that it can bring to everybody in this town.
I know, I know it's more- Is it too late to get one of those, get a question like that on this?
It's kind of hard to do it on paper, Ernie, because it's so, it's such a diverse topic to understand why the town would want to pay for a sewer line. And to understand that it's not just paying for the sewer line, it's paying for the whole project itself and what the town can get out of that. It's almost like a presentation itself and Ernie would be more than happy to come back and-
We'd love to. Well, look, it just took us an hour to discuss it, right? So it's not, it's not a one-line area.
It's not easy, it's not something you can just-
Right. And I, I guess the other thing to think about in the grand scheme of things, it is an entire project for all users, right? So it's not only that $4 million we're worried about losing, it's that $15 million investment that DOT is putting through this area. You know, that's huge for any community to grab a hold of and go with.
Yeah, so total would be like a roughly a $21 million project with the sewer and water. And whatnot, and it's only, what, 1.1 miles? But it's sewer, water and storm drain under the whole length of it and three road, uh, two railroad crossings.
Yeah, you're going to have five-foot trenches on each side of the road and going down three feet in the road, so quite a bit of excavation.
Sewer line going down through Depot Street here is like 15 feet deep. It's down. And the only time you're going to have a chance to repair it and do it right is while the road's all dug up. That's not something we can do without that, though, is it, Bill?
Give you a spade, you can do something, you know.
I like that idea.
I'd like to video that.
Give him two, he might need a spade.
Let's keep this civil.
That was. You started it, too.
So I, I guess in, in response to your question, Ernie, is I just, I don't think there's enough time just to get enough information out there so people can make an informed decision. I think it would be better to do a special town meeting sometime and, and considering, you know, all the variables in it, you know, it may be better to do an open town meeting, but I'm not sure. Again, that's your discretion, however you feel you're going to get the most representation.
Well, putting something, I was wondering when the deadline for that is. I don't think we have the required information and plan to present that at a November election. So let's wait until we get all the cards on the table and see whose cards are mocked.
How much time are you going to need to bring us these, the numbers and stuff that we talked about so we could?
On the SIP stuff, I think I can get that for you next week. I think I'd get it probably, I'll get it started tomorrow when I get back to the office. We just got to sit down and look at the account, look at what we've done for other loans in similar places. But they've been relative, they've been relatively low. I think the terrible debt in anything else is really the forgiveness that is the balance, I think.
Yeah, we'd have to see the higher interest rate with a million-dollar principal forgiveness if we qualify.
How that'll work, so.
But you know, we're not going to know that part until-
Down the road.
May of next year, maybe, April and May, before we actually hear from the bond bank or the SRF program.
When you did, you could pay us back and use that, if that was advantageous to you, right? It just depends on how you want it.
Well, at that point, there probably would be any money spent on engineering, so it would be small.
So we'd be looking at potentially scheduling another meeting before the end of the month so we can go over this? If you guys need some answers before October by the sounds of it. Because we don't have any other meetings this month.
If we got any, I, I think we'd like it before October, if it were early into October, I think we'd be okay, we can slide some things around. We're going to obligate it, we're going to move forward as if we're building a project right now.
You just don't know what the project is at this point.
I know what our project is. What that project is, I do not, right?
Next month, right?
On the 7th.
Yeah, so what, three weeks.
I mean, we have two more Tuesdays in the month, so.
Yeah, we have two more Tuesdays.
We have one on the 30th.
Any other day for that matter?
Would the board feel okay with asking for another meeting this month? On the 30th, well, we've got another Tuesday, that'd give us two weeks, we can hash this out. You guys can bring us some numbers.
We can get a lot of information together in two weeks.
Yep.
And that would be your deadline? And that would be your deadline for October? Yeah, that could be fine, and if it were to spill over a little bit, we'd be okay. It sounds like we're making some progress today, which, which was helpful to, helpful to us.
It's a scary number to, to give out to the users with everything as, as prices. It's no guarantee that it's a, a yes, it's just, you know, let's explore this avenue if we can.
I will tell you, our price is a stable, we, we, we led the nation for a while during COVID and price escalation, you probably all know that. I was in Lewis at the time, ours were doing the same thing. They have settled out some, we're seeing decent, we're not, we're not getting any savings, but, but the escalation has-
Flatline, it's flatline.
And advertising this in the fall, early winter is a good time, right? Because a lot of those earth contractors, the bigger contractors are looking for their first job. Once they have two or three in the bank, they get a little sharper with their pencils. So fall is a good time to advertise a project like this.
All right, so is there another meeting on this idea to, you know, nail things down, get facts and push?
So I move that we will table this until the 30th of September, 6 o'clock.
Second.
October. Have you heard the discussion? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you very much for talking to us.
I should still go ahead with the GPS locations because that will be handy no matter which way we go.
Yes.
Yeah, because your services aren't part of it, they're part of your, you know.
Yes, we will put new services to the property, is the intent. We don't, we don't own the, the whole, by the home, but.
I would still get that intel.
Okay.
More intel, you can get us better all day. It'd be nice to earn it.
Which one?
You take care of that one, I'll take care of the other.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have fire substation. Were you able to get any info on the, what we'd asked?
No, I still haven't heard back from MMA Legal, so they, I know they're, they're really shorthand. I think they're actually down to one attorney over there right now, so. Kind of punt that one down the road again.
So given what we have for options right now, I move to table the fire substation till October 7th, right? Is that our next regular meeting?
Yes.
Till October 7th. All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Up next, we have cemetery mowing bid, form approval.
So in your packets, you have the request for proposals for cemetery bidding. As we talked about, we wanted to get this out sooner rather than later, so we have accurate budget numbers going into budget season.
It was very thorough, I know that.
We looking to accept this form or is this disinformation?
I have to vote to approve it.
Are you okay with bids being due by the 21st?
By October.
Correct.
I make a motion we approve the request for proposals for the mowing bid.
I second.
All those in favor? All in favor of approval of the request for, request for approval, proposals, there we go, none opposed. On the new business, we have a send motion to purchase 2001 Rosenbauer Commander Pumper and the 2004 Pierce Aero Ladder trucks. Based on information and as of some legal counsel and stuff, the way the warrant is worded says a fire truck and therefore recommended that we do not try to use it to buy multiple fire trucks. So I move to rescind the vote as read.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, are we in discussion? All those in favor of rescinding the vote? For, all those opposed? Abstaining, one abstaining, first sustains. So we'll be rescinding this. Hopefully, we're looking at some more information for other trucks. Do we have any information tonight based on that or?
I don't, I don't.
I see a couple of members of the fire department, do we have any thoughts on what we're going to move forward with or look at?
Yeah, so we had found a few used trucks and a brand-new one, another brand-new one. But the brand-new one would be, could be lease purchase agreement. So obviously, it's more money than the 650 we agreed on, but we do have a couple of trucks here. If you guys would like to look at them, I can bring them up and show you, obviously, I don't have copies for everybody right this second, but.
Yeah, if you want to leave, we'll, we'll get some copies of them and look at them. What can we do as far as moving forward for looking for trucks to try to get us into the, into that, that price range? Do we have any, any brainstorming, any, any other options?
Yes, a brand-new truck would be nice, but they're $900,000 for a new truck, so.
And you have a couple fairly, how, how, what's the newest used one that's in the price range?
Uh, there's a 21, there's a 2020, there's a 2024 for 657. There's a 2020 for 685. And there's a 2021.
I was going to say Nixon had found a couple of demos that were commercial, they're not the custom, custom build trucks that were, one of them was what, 389.9, that one was in Canada, and then there was another one, it was in Alabama, that was where somebody found that one. one of them was what, three eighty-nine-nine? That one was in Canada. There was another one that was in Alabama that was, somebody found that one. That was another one that was in Alabama. Those were both demos that had very low mileage, very low hours.
Yeah, those are the chassis ones.
Yeah.
What do you mean by that, the chassis ones?
They, um, they're different than a custom pumper. Like Engine One is a custom pumper and then the other ones are chassis. It's like, like the
It's like a trail truck when you're driving down the road and all that.
You can get parts very easy for them.
Is that?
Because they're like an international freight liner, MAC, that you can go to a dealer and run a bid number and get the replacement part, where custom, they're, they're hard, hard thing to get parts for.
Okay. What is, uh, what's the big, is there a big concern with those ones or what's the?
Long and beat turning radius because you figure the truck's thirty, thirty-nine feet long and then you got the big nose in front of you trying to steer. So, that's, that's a concern. But a lot of these other, they're, they're still freight liner chassis or international chassis or whatever, but they have different bodies on them. Some of it are like Engine One. So down the road in thirty, thirty-five years, we're going to be dealing with the same issues. We're dealing with Engine One not being able to find pirates.
As you mentioned, do they have the same water capacity?
Yeah, they're all a thousand gallons or so.
Thank you. What about the, the ones that you found, the demo ones?
They're thousand gallons too.
The one was a top mount, one was a side mount. The, the preference is a top mount just for firefighter safety reasons, so. The one that was the top mount was four eighty, four, I think, four ninety?
Four something like that.
Yeah. So, like I said, those, both of those were, were brand new, but they were, they were a commercial cabin chassis, if you will. One was a, one was a, I honestly, you've shown me so many Nixon's, sorry.
I've seen so many too, so.
Yeah.
What's the seating capacity on those ones?
Four, four to five people.
What, what's the, what's the number one hold right now? The one you use?
It's six, eight.
Six, eight. And do you usually fill that with eight people when you go to calls?
We, sometimes when we have like, um, going to different towns and with any rip team, Engine One goes and that's where we have the rip bag and all that stuff. So, it'd be between six to seven people going.
What type of warrant? Would they have to mention the warranties on those newer ones?
The, the new ones, um, they have warranties. It's like, uh, one of them, like I, I'll show you the, the pumper, the brand new pumper that, top mount pump that you guys wa, saw last time. They have bumper to bumper warranty for five years, motor and transmission, seven years. And then, um, and then lifetime on the pump warranty.
What about the demo one, the one that's the chassis?
That one was a ten year.
Yeah, it was like nine to ten years warranty.
I don't remember.
But I think it was the transmission in, in the, um, in the motor, the pump, I think it was like three or four years. On the pump?
I, I honestly don't remember.
Jeremy, I, I thought that's what it was. But we could go back and look at those.
Yeah. I'd be curious, what other, how much, how much they're getting used, those ones, because everybody's, the money's tight. So I can understand why there probably a lot of people are looking at something that's a two-thirds the price, you know? So I'd be curious, uh, how long, how long have they been, those have been on the market?
They've been for a while. I always had, saw the last time we had the meeting, they were still there. And I checked it again, they're still there, both along. The one in Ca, the one from Canada, at one point was go, said it was going to be sold, but it never got sold. So, it's back on, on the market.
I'm, I'm kind of more curious how mu, how long they've been like in use in other towns and how they're, how they're performing.
Oh, on, on, on those kind of chassis?
I'd be ki, I'm just kind of curious. It's a question I'd like to look into.
Depends on the number of calls.
Right.
Wherever they are stationed.
Yeah, because pretty much a roundoff, the only one that has one is J, the Engine One.
Yep.
Yeah, J has that big deal. I think it's a freight liner chassis.
Yeah.
But easy to get parts for because it is freight liner.
Yeah, but they, they always had a hard time getting to rolls because it's so long and, and.
It's not like this town is full of wide avenues.
Yeah.
Hard to believe. A major metropolitan place like Livermore Falls.
Well, I think, what's the board's thoughts on tailing this for, till the next meeting?
I think so.
And we'll get some, keep digging. I know it's, hate to keep putting it off, but please bring us some more information and let's get this done.
Down to one or two choices that carry in the fire department besides. Because if we're going to act, you know, us filtering through a bunch of choices isn't as good as two firemen and the town manager narrowing it down to two choices and we select one of those two.
Yeah, the, the point in our, in our part, we like the top mount pump because you could see everything on the scene. And it's easier for everybody to see the scene and, and pay attention to the inside of the building with the holes and stuff like that. So if something happens, you could shut off or turn another line and stuff like that. And the sound mount, it's really hard because you gotta pay attention to the radio a lot and stuff. That's why I brought the lease program for the top mount pump. Because that's, you know, I know it's a lease, but we go, it's a brand new truck. It has warranty on it and it's all there. And we just pay something every year. But they have three year, five year and a seven year.
That's leased to buy?
Leased to buy, because at the end of the lease, you can purchase it, whatever's remaining on it.
In Alabama, it was the one that had that top mount?
This one is pretty much local around here. It's, it's in New Hampshire, but the, they, the warehouse is in Pennsylvania. And they make them and they can bring them here. It's closer than Alabama.
No, those are the ones, we're looking at eight hundred, sorry, I didn't mean.
Yeah, that's the, the eight hundred and seven. But to find one like that, like a twenty-four, a twenty-three, it's really hard because a lot, a lot of firefighters like the top mount pump. That's why you see a lot of side mount pumps.
And that is safer, the top mount?
Yes.
Yeah, the top, the side mount pumps are ninety-nine percent of them that I've seen are all on the driver's side. So you go up to a scene, you get out of the truck, you get out of the truck and now you're standing in the road here pumping the truck while the fire is on the opposite side from where you're at. And not only that, if you're standing, standing on the driver's side of the truck, ninety percent of the time, you're in the roadway unless you come in the other way.
Do any of the freight liner chassis offer a top mount?
The one that we saw has a top mount.
So that, there is an option for something like that that would be preferable in that style? Okay. I'd be curious to see that one and what you, what you guys' thoughts are on it and stuff. I just, you know.
No, the top mount makes sense. It's safer.
Well, and we also have a, a long-term goal too of rebuilding the fire department. You know, it's not just this one truck. It's what we can have in five years too. So, and we know we need, you guys need something. So, it, it's definitely a tough one.
Would you guys be comfortable selecting a top pick tonight or do you want to wait and have more information for the next meeting?
Maybe we could get, we've been this long without a truck, so another couple of weeks isn't going to hurt anything at this point, I guess. So we can try to figure out exactly what's going to fit the department and the town's needs the best.
Just a question. I wanted to see if we could step up on that.
As much as you guys would, I'd like to get this nailed down too, but I'd hate to make a decision tonight and repurchase the truck and regret it. Because once we buy the truck, it's ours.
So what I'm hearing is you want them to come back to you with options for a top mount? What else? Chassis.
Well, we can only, we can only buy one. Uh, I, I would, from what I've heard, I'd prefer the easy to get parts.
For the commercial?
The commercial one.
Yep.
What else?
Find a grant that pays for half of it?
Don't try. Any, any other criteria you want, want limiting for, for what they're going to be looking for?
No, because they'll know more, what they're going to need and look for, so they can pass that on to you.
Yeah, what the warranty is, the specs, spec sheet on it, that would be good.
And then if you could find us something else that's, you know, a regular fire, you know, standard fire truck within the price range, you know, that you guys like to, you know, give, bring us a couple. It's, and then we can try to make a decision.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so I move that we table the
We already rescinded.
We already have a motion to do anything, man. All right, well, that's true. So we'll just, we're going to look to add that to the agenda for October seventh. Up next, we have school board resignation and appointment. So Roger Moulton has resigned from the school board. And we have a couple of people that are interested, so we have a couple of options like last time.
So, um, what's happened previously is you guys have gone back to the candidate who received the second most votes. Um, last election we did in April of twenty twenty-five, there was only one candidate and one write-in, so that doesn't really, really count. So you would have to go back to the election for twenty twenty-four. And that was Phoebe Pike. Doris did reach out to, reach out to her and she said she would be willing to, um, fill it until April, which you have to have another election regardless to, to fill the rest of the term. But I also was approached by somebody else who said that she was also be, would also be willing to sort of on the board until the April election.
Was it Tammy?
Yeah, Tammy Ferrari.
Ferrari.
Did they, did they both have prior school board experience?
She, Phoebe was the board member that Roger ran against and won by one vote. She's been on the school board for several, several years.
I honestly don't know if Tammy has school board experience or not.
Because, because having experience on a board does make a difference.
So I was going to say, so you have, you have that option. You can just appoint someone tonight based on, you know, what we just talked about. Or you could solicit applications from people and review the applications and then make a decision from there. You've done it, you've done it both ways.
Yeah.
I say let's fill it. Can I get it done? Get somebody on the board representing us?
Coming to April.
It's only seven months.
I know I've had a couple of people on the board reach out to me about Tammy and their interest in having that, obviously. With everything going on in the country, I don't hate to make things political, but I do have, I, I'd like to know more about this other candidate and I don't know anything about her yet. And I would like to have time to ask some questions. That's my feeling.
I would prefer to appoint this evening.
Me too.
And the other candidates can run in April, but we can put someone on now who has the experience. And who is also willing to do it.
If I was going to be into a vote tonight, I would most likely vote for, for Tammy myself. Just based off of, I'd like to try somebody new, so.
Well, we tried somebody new with Roger.
Well, I mean, the people tried somebody new.
Yeah, well, I was one of the people that was voting.
You've got a citizen that's got a We have two people interested, right?
Yes.
So why wouldn't you table it until the next meeting and you five people could sit down individually and go over each person? Find out who's the best candidate. Do it that way. I think that would be the democratic way to do it. Instead of just rushing into a decision that we may regret.
Yeah, we've done that before.
I'm saying. Well, that way you get to see them.
I agree with that.
Give it a little thought, you know what I mean?
I, I, I think if we have two people that are, if we have two people that are interested, then we should. We should give them a fair shot to
I make a motion, we ask the two potential school board members to be at our next meeting, go into executive session and interview each one separately.
Second. I would like to make the executive session begin at five thirty. Since we meet at six, there's no need for them to sit through an entire board meeting for that executive session.
We could adjust the agenda and have the executive session first. That is something that can be done.
Yeah, we can do that. As long as they're not having to sit here and go through an entire meeting just waiting to see which one of them we're going to pick.
I, I amend my motion to state that we have executive session right after pledge of allegiance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Right after pledge of allegiance, I would say.
Appreciate the input. All right. So hopefully we can reach out to them and see if we can get them to come in here and give us a talk with us. All right, up next, we have PW Freightliner bid and sale.
We put the four by four out to auction twice and not receive enough money for it. I mean, they were very low bids. So that one there, I would like to have your permission to put it out for sale and we've got a suggestion on a price that we should list it for. And the Freightliner Wheeler, we just received the new truck last Monday, picked it up last Monday. Do you want to put that one out to bid or would you like to just put that one out for sale, set price? Looking for your opinion on that.
Past practice, we have done both.
Yeah, we did the four by four. We listed it twice, auctions at national and municipal, is that?
Uh, Gov deals.
Gov deals. Yeah, and the highest number we got was what? What was that from? That was from?
Fifteen-two, I think.
Yeah.
Bids can be anywhere.
Yeah.
If we put it up for sale and we've got a bottom line price, I think we would be rid of them quicker and have more money in our tills quicker. So I would be in favor of putting them both up for sale. But that's just me.
Yeah.
Well, we've had the, the four by four up for several weeks and that was the one that had the engine redone, right?
Yes, that's the one that had the engine done in it. Uh, it had a lot of views, but just like anybody, they're trying to get it for nothing and with that engine in it with two thousand miles on it, it was not worth giving away. It, you'd be better off to keep it for a spare plow truck and then give it away, is my opinion.
Right. We might have a crazy winter this year. I know what, the five fifties are all four-wheel drive, right? The five fifty and six fifty?
Yeah, five fifty and six hundred, we plowed with, uh, with Rodney retiring. Rodney's the only one that ever drove that four by four. And the mechanic took over plowing his route and he was a lot more comfortable in the five fifty and we just don't get the big snowstorms anymore. And it's over half the money less to build a five fifty, six hundred versus it is building one of them trucks.
Don't need a CDL either, right?
Yeah, and you don't need a CDL.
Well, then, I would make the motion that we place the Freightliner and the four by four for sale.
Well, wait a second. So Phil, uh, he's been looking at similar vehicles and what they've been selling for, so, um, we need to set a minimum, or not a minimum, but yeah, a sale price.
What's your recommendation? What, what do you recommend, Bill?
What was the numbers? We talked about a couple of different ones.
I think the, oh gosh, I'm going to get them, continue.
The four by four.
One of them was thirty-seven-five, the other one was
Thirty-seven-five.
Twenty, seventy-five.
Twenty-seven-five for the, for, uh, the Wheeler. They're both freight liners, yeah. The four by four, thirty-seven thousand five hundred and the Wheeler would be twenty-seven thou, uh, twenty-seven thousand five hundred.
It just says four by four Freightliner. I don't have choices.
Alright, so, sorry, was, was it twenty-seven thousand for the?
The Wheeler, the Freightliner Wheeler, the ten-wheel truck.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven five. And the Freightliner four by four, thirty-seven five.
And that's after looking at other vehicles and the condition, you feel that's a...
Wheelers, I found anywheres from forty thousand, they had stainless steel bodies, less miles, to twenty thousand, that were about the same miles and like a couple of years older. So that just seemed like a good, fair, you know, market value for what that truck will go for. And we take suggestions.
Right, I'm not familiar with prices, so I haven't, I'm gonna have to lean on you for that.
And in the past, that money would go to the Public Works Department?
Goes to the reserve fund.
Yeah, wow, same thing.
Please make that part of the motion.
That's what I was working on.
Well, I will make the motion that we place the Freightliner Wheeler for sale at twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, along with the four by four plow truck at thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And once sold, show the funds go into the reserve, Public Reserve, Public Works Reserve Fund.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Four in favor, abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
One abstaining. Alright, let us know how it goes. Up next, we have chlorine contact tank modification reserve request.
So, we have the need to get down in the chlorine contact tank. We overlook this part of the upgrade, therefore no access to the chlorine contact tank sample aligned inlet was made as part of the upgrade to this treatment plant. Currently, our means of accessing it are rather unorthodox. And it could be construed as being a safety issue. I'd like to correct that before we have any issues. This is a line that we sometimes have to access weekly, at least monthly through the summer months while we're doing our phosphor sampling. But as that sample line becomes dirty and we have to clean it, we actually have to get down in the tank itself. So this would build a landing for us to actually stand on, kneel on, to access this, as opposed to putting a ladder down into the water of the tank and then going down the ladder into the tank. It's a must.
Could this be considered, if it were inspected or observed, as an OSHA violation?
The ladder?
I can't say. But.
But regardless, it's not...
It's gonna be much safer doing it the way we have designed, and it will meet OSHA regulations. The access that we have designed. The materials, but keep in mind, there are two chlorine contact tanks. We are not looking for access to both of them. When we have to do the sampling, we will use the north tank and make sure that the north tank is online when we have to do this sort of sampling. So our samples will come out of the north tank all of the time.
Now, how much was that?
That was ten thousand dollars, up to ten thousand dollars. The materials will all be either stainless steel or aluminum, so we don't have to worry about corrosion. There will be modifications to the handrails at the top of the tank. There'll be secure models for a ladder to be attached to. All should be OSHA approved. And it'll be safer for our men and make the, the project of cleaning this line on a regular basis much easier.
Now, there have been some changes that have saved us money?
Yes.
And some changes that cost us money?
Yes.
How are we on no, on those two lines at this time?
This would, this is not money that's coming out of the project, this is a request from the joint reserve account. I'm not suggesting we do this as part of the project because it would be a change order, and you could probably triple that amount.
Thank you, that's kinda where I was getting at. You reading my mind again?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to, but as far as change orders, we are about even on what we've had to change to make the project better, as opposed to what we've changed and saved money on. We're keeping the same quality of project.
So this would be joint account?
This would come from the joint reserve account, the town of Jay would have to approve the same expenditure at their next meeting, next Tuesday night, no, next Monday night, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the chlorine contact tank modification for up to ten thousand dollars.
I second.
All those in favor of the motion? All in favor and none opposed? Alright, let us know how it goes in Jay.
Yep, we'll do it.
Next, we have warrants, payments, deeds, and quitclaim. Oh, I will, I must have either, oh, there we go. Alright. Up next, we have a snow thrower, what is?
Yep, so we have a tractor, forty-five horsepower, Coyote tractor for the sewer treatment plant. The idea where we bought it was for snow removal, it's gonna be one of its major tasks, knowing that we were going to have nooks, crannies, roadways that were not easily plowed, um, yet quite substantial in size. It would necessitate the use of a snow blower mounted on the back of the tractor. So we have the tractor, and now I'm just looking to buy an implement for it, is what it amounts to. We have kicked around the idea of putting a snow blower behind it that would run off the three-point hitch that you drag behind you, so in other words, you drive over the snow, and the snow blower blows it from behind you, if you drag it in the forward direction. And we've looked at the ones that would go on the back that you would actually back up with. So, we have talked to people that have used both, um, there are pros and cons to each one, but the areas that we're looking to do, we believe, and all of the operators down there agreed that we wanted one that you have to back up with. We think that would be in our best interest. We're afraid that the snow is going to pack down too much and not be lifted off, and we've had strips of ice, so to speak, from the coyotes packing it down. We get a lot more wet, heavy snowstorms now than we used to. It's, in the toe behind that you drive forward and drag it behind you, it's a new concept. I don't know. Six of one, half a dozen the other?
I can see the problem with not being able to actually work it, too. Sure, if you're trying to plow the snow blow up to something and clean it, versus driving over the front of it with a tractor also. If they've ever done snow removal, packing it down first, doesn't it, doesn't usually go well with icy, so.
So we're, we're, you know, it's, it wouldn't have been a decision had these new styles that you dragged behind you come out. We would've just bought one for the back, which was the end a few years ago, but we're still thinking that's the route we'd like to take. So, I am in the process of getting three quotes. The problem is, Farmington Fair came about, and some of the people up there are not in their office, they couldn't get the quote to me. But the numbers that I had gotten preliminary, not on paper, are below the six thousand dollars that I'm requesting. Some of them considerably lower. But we can definitely buy a seventy-four inch is what we're looking to put behind this, our tractor's seventy-two inches wide. So we'd get a seventy-four inch snow blower to go behind it.
Would you be able to have those quotes by the board meeting in, on the seventh, in October? I would recommend that we table this until we have those numbers.
And that's fine, as long as it doesn't snow, okay, now that goes.
It's got a pocket on the front.
We'll get you three shelves.
That might have been too great of a point for me, geez.
So I move that we table this until, uh, until Mark can get the numbers from the other people and have them for us on October the seventh.
So, on that, I may actually have these numbers for the selectmen's meeting in the town of Jay when I go over that with them. So they may actually have the opportunity to look at these numbers and prove them beforehand, so if all goes well.
We asked first.
What's that?
Said we asked first.
Okay, I didn't wait there.
No, well, as long as they know we asked first.
Yes, yep. What was that, Bill?
How big's the bucket?
It's a six foot wide bucket. But the same thing with that, it's not a snow bucket, it's not a high-volume bucket. It would be easier to plow the snow than it would be to bucket the snow. And you'd end up with the same problem where you gotta put it. That's what the snow blower solves for a problem and takes care of it. All of one fell swoop. Mostly, um, it's the area in front of the end works building and the road going back to the trickle filters. There's just no real place to put the snow once you plow it. If you're snow blower, it's one and done, so it'd be a time saver.
We have a motion, I'll second it.
There's a motion on the floor.
The motion is to table until the October seventh meeting. All those in favor?
October seventh is gonna be a long meeting.
No, not that long. Alright. Up next, we have payroll, warrants, payments, deeds, and quitclaim. I move to approve payroll warrant number thirty-five in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-two cents. Number thirty-six, twenty-seven thousand dollars, six hundred forty-eight, six hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. Number thirty-seven, the amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. General fund warrant number eight, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Number nine, the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred one dollars and thirty-two cents. Number ten, the amount of ten thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents. Number eleven, the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-two, six hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I second.
Discussion, all those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Alright, we'll move on to board discussions. Jones, wanna have anything? Jeff?
Oh, what?
I think this is information, just for us to look at.
And for Jeff's relief, I am not sa, I have nothing to say tonight.
Alright, no, I'm all set.
Get on the camera.
Alright, manage this discussion.
So, uh, the flag at Union Park has been picked.
May I speak to that? I watched that. And I watched Mr. Nichols climbing up that thing like he was climbing Mount Everest. Never stopped, never flinched, never did anything, got up there and did it, and I'm so appreciative, so appreciative. I watched as long as I could because I have a fear of heights, and I'm, and it scares me to watch people up that high. But yes, thank you, it was very well done.
So it was, it was replaced with the nine eleven ceremonies, and we thank you, Michael, and the other veterans who participated and the first responders that were also there. So we do have a new flag drop box that was donated by the VFW that's out in the lobby, I don't know if anybody has seen that or not. So anybody that has a flag that needs to be disposed, um, you're more than welcome to leave it here and we'll be sure it gets, gets where it needs to go so it can be disposed of appropriately. Speaking of flags, um, I did the cemetery committee meeting, is it last week or the week before? And they are gonna be picking the flags up sometime after next week, so they'll be working on retrieving all those. Ion renewables, it's almost done with the engineering for the solar array out on the landfill cap. Um, I think they'll send it, it's gonna be mowed tomorrow, um, so they can go out and finish the survey. And, um, that will, should, I shouldn't say, should be going to the planning board for their meeting in October for site plan review. We're anxious to get going on it.
Where, where is this one?
This is on the landfill cap.
Okay.
Yeah.
By the transfer station?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, the church is under contract. Yay, so basically we saw the sign stuck on the for sale sign that it is under contract, so hopefully we'll have a closing for that soon. And the last thing I have is we did have the recreation master plan debriefing meeting last week. We had a few of our residents there, thank you to those that came for that. This was just kind of a, um, an overview of, of the plan itself and those next steps. Part of the, the biggest part of the first implementation steps is to develop a recreation coalition. And we did have quite a few people that agreed to step up and be part of that group, so I'm anxious to, to get that moving forward. It's a good product and it's a good, a good project, and it will tie in with our downtown revitalization, tie recreation into that as well.
Department heads, Doris. I can't remember what order we went last time, so we'll just start with the A's.
Well, ladies first.
I just wanna make sure everybody remembers trunk or treat, if you're interested. It will be October thirty-first from five to seven out here at the gazebo. Please let me know if you're planning on coming. Um, I'm just putting up a little list so that we know who's here. There is a scarecrow contest. Um, I have some applications here, if anybody's interested. You can, within limits, um, create a scarecrow. We can have it placed on Main Street, it's gonna go from probably around, depending on how many people we get, like our fire station, up to the J fire station is what we would love to do. It will be fun, um, just some nice town participation and, you know, just get some community work going. Out here in the lobby, we have a box, um, looking for donations for friends. Dog food, cat food, cat litter, toys, blankets, Clorox wipes, gift cards to track the supply, anything along those lines that we can donate. The donations will be split up, uh, Jay and us are doing it, so it'll either go to Franklin Shelter or Canobec, because that's who we use.
Uh, where are we? How are we getting word out about the scarecrow contest?
Well, I have the applications, there are some showings online, and ours will be online. I just wanted to share it with you guys first.
Yes, that'll look interesting. I hope we get a lot of participation. Nate?
Uh, I did talk with our payment contractor a couple of weeks ago, uh, out of the four roads that we was gonna pave this year with the budget being delayed. We may get one road paved. The other three, he said we are way too late on the list to get on them unless some miracle happens. But like I said, we, we got a good chance of getting the foundry road paved, but it would not be until sometime in October. But to get the surface on NAP and Millet and Union Street is definitely out. Just too late in the season to get locked in on their schedule. So, that's the only thing I really got.
Thank you, Bill. Nate, what do you have for us?
So, many of you know we did have a structural fire here yesterday morning. Just thanks for everybody who showed up. We had townspeople bringing coffee, sent coffee on the back of my truck for firefighters and stuff, so. That was huge help, so thanks to, uh, everybody who did that. The, I do have a cost recovery agreement from Central Rain Cost Recovery for the billing ordinance that we voted on forever ago. The, we've, Kerry's emailed a couple of different people about it, I've emailed people about it, and Central Rain Cost Recovery is the only one who sent us back a quote. Their quote was, uh, twenty-five percent of whatever the bill is. If there's no money collected, then it'll be paid, so.
Now, is this the one that a lot of people use? I thought we, we had a conversation.
Yeah, about ninety percent of the fire departments who built for accidents and whatever use this company.
Kerry, well, where there's, do we have to have three quotes, or can we move forward, nobody else wants to come forward?
I've tried, yeah.
Right, so we should be able to move forward then, I would imagine. I know this is not on the agenda, can we make a motion to move forward with main cost recovery?
If we can.
I'd like to make a motion right now that we move forward with main cost recovery, the...
Central main cost recovery.
Central main. Central main cost recovery for the nuisance call, uh-
Billing.
Billing.
I second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
When did you get that, Nate? Was it just today?
The, yes. I emailed them again today to make sure we were all on the same page to about that. I actually emailed my signee and leaned back today. So it was twenty-five percent right from Bill Wentworth, who's one of the top dogs from this company.
Alright.
So is that a document that we have to sign as a selectman?
Either that or you have to delegate me to sign it.
We don't, we don't even have legal look at it or anything?
Yeah, we could. Probably wouldn't hurt with the contract, so it depends, what are the terms on it, how, how long, all that?
We don't even have, we didn't even get a copy of it, so it's kinda scary or something, and we didn't even see. I'm not, I'm good.
Well, that's where we have discussion, right?
So it's a year, it automatically renews you in the month? Yeah, I, I would wanna read it and digest it before I signed it, but-
And we'll, we'll put this off until October seventh? Because that's a good idea, we should have a look at.
Well, then, I will amend my motion to ask the town manager to review the contract, have legal review the contract and have information for us on October seventh.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Is that everything?
Go ahead.
Are you doing a hundred thousand this year at this?
I believe so. We have our meeting coming right up there, next week, we got there. We should get things rolling for that.
I know the community loves that, so.
Yep.
Mark?
I think the hour we spent at the beginning of the meeting was enough for the Sewer Department, does anybody have any questions?
No. Alright. Public comment? Yes, Bryce?
Just wondering if the September eighth meeting to set the bill rate was posted anywhere?
Alright. We'll get back to, I'm sure we put it up someplace. I'll have to dig into that further. And I will give you an answer, one way or the other, okay?
Yep, appreciate it.
Yes, John?
Yes, that as well, recorded as well, I think that was supposed to be recorded. The next thing, a question, so the planning board had a vacancy, an opening which I applied for, I put my name in. I was just wondering, what, what is the process to get selected for that? I guess I wasn't able to attend the meeting last time, but I heard that somebody else was chosen. Just didn't know if-
Well, we are, as far as I know, we are offered up a name and we discuss it and make a choice.
Was my name on that? So how do I know if my name was on that list?
Can I give you an answer later on and I will talk it over? Because I don't have an answer for you right now.
Yeah, I guess.
Okay?
Yeah, I got a lot of stuff to say, but, oh.
I'll look into it. Do we have any other public comment? We're not seeing any. We have no executive session.
I move to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor? All in favor of adjourn? Thank you, everybody for coming.